I'd like to call our April 23, 2012 Regular Meeting to Order. May I have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Thede.
President.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mrs. Crowe.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
President.
Mr. Kudrick.
President.
Mrs. Funderberg.
Here.
This is Beard. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If any member of the Board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will become the first item of business under the report of the superintendent portion of the agenda. A, Approval. To approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, March 26, 2012, and study session of April 2, 2012. B, Approval. To approve the personnel actions as submitted by Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resources, leave of absence, elementary teacher, resignation, elementary teacher, and GSRP classroom assistant, retirement, elementary teacher. C, Approval. To approve the bills for payment as submitted by Sherry Papazaglu, Director of Business and Operations, in the amount of $3,808,085.13. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion. We accept the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Kudrick. Was that Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, I'm sorry. My mic was cracked, as I suppose.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven. Okay, next is the report of the superintendent, and we have Ms. Rebecca Peck filling in for Mr. Weiss.
Okay. So, our first item of business from the report of the superintendent is Romulus Middle School. They are here to give an update on the SIG. We have Mr. Jason Salhaney and his lovely two children, who are going to get up and speak, perhaps. We also have Mr. Rourke.
Mr. Rourke. Thank you. I got my own clicker over here, so Thursday's Take Your Child to Work Day, so I was going to switch over to today. Okay, so, here we are. We're here to talk about our school improvement grant update. Again, we are on target and we're moving forward. We're getting ready to close out our second year of the grant, which means we're going to be starting to talk about sustainability. Click. Okay, the first thing I'll show you today is some of our data. Okay, you can see by these graphs, what they're showing is this is our NWA MAP progress between fall and winter. You'll see on the left is our math from the first year and then the fall, and then the next one is our progress showing our fall of the following year. The same thing with the reading over there. We've got on the left is last year's, and then on the right is this year. So, this is just, again, one progress, one point of data that shows our progress towards our goals. Over here, we have our NWA MAP Average Proficiency Alignment. So, when we look at the NWA MAP test and we look at the MEEP test, MAP, NWA says if they score through this range, that means they're likely to be proficient on the MEEP, or if you score in this range, you're likely to be not proficient on the MEEP. So, they do correlate. They still have to do some updating with the new cut scores, and they're in the process of doing that right now across the country. They're in the process of norming that. So, if you see, you know, our numbers have gone up between the spring and the fall, obviously that is our summer slide, and we're going to, that's what we're going to talk about with you, is how we plan to address that sort of summer slide. So, over there, winter 2012, you can see we're back on the uptrend, and then, you know, we're very confident that our last data point, which is in another couple weeks, we're just, we're preparing for it right now to get ready, we're pretty confident we'll move up as well. So, addressing those needs, you'll see the summer slide. "I am the Difference," that's our slogan we're starting with tomorrow. Our current sixth and seventh grade students and their parents, in order for us to make AYP next year, we have to look at each of our pockets of our students, and we have to identify what's called Safe Harbor. Safe Harbor means we have to move 10% of our students in each of the different populations. We have to move them up into proficient. So, what we've done is we sorted through all of our students, we looked at MAP data, MEEP data, in order to come up with a list of students that we need, students that we need to focus on, students that we need to make sure we're providing all the services we possibly can in order to get them over that hump to pass the MEEP. And to come back a little bit, you know, we always talk about to pass the MEEP, but, you know, the intent is also that we're teaching them lifelong skills, okay? The MEEP test is one test along the way, but it's what we're measured by right now, so that's what we're working towards. So, taking a look, "I am the Difference" is the theme, the sixth and seventh grade students, so all of those students' parents received a letter yesterday, not yesterday, but last week, that talked about a meeting that they're going to be having tomorrow. We're going to be meeting with our sixth graders on Tuesday, our seventh graders on Wednesday. There's approximately 88 kids total. That's our, sort of our bare minimum of our Safe Harbor students. And so, what we're going to really talk to them about is how they are the difference, how they're going to make the difference at Romulus Middle School, how they are the ones that can really make or break us, and how they're the ones that we're going to focus some of our time and our energy. These are our intervention students through our early warning system that we are going to focus on. The plan is, over the summer and over the next couple weeks, we're going to be matching them up with mentors, with our teachers in our building. Those mentors will sort of be coach them along the way about checking work, making sure they're in school, looking at attendance issues, looking at contacts with parents. So, again, for the students just to have another contact, another person in the building that they can go to to get support from. We're going to offer an incentive for the students that any of the mentors that help their students move their grades up one letter grade will be invited to an ice cream social at the end of the year. So, that's one of the things, those "I am the Difference," we want to look at those individual students who will be able to make a difference for us. We're going to really hype it up. I mean, we've got, you know, buttons and T-shirts and all that kind of stuff from now until we get to the fall time, which we're going to call it Power Up for MEEP, and that will start in the end of the summer, and will get us ready for that MEEP testing cycle in October. That's the last thing down there. So, over the summer, we're going to be, like I said, we're going to be working with parents about how to use our online programs, how to use different things over the summer so that they can, you know, keep their minds thinking and keep their, you know, their bodies working and such. We're going to be partnering with Wayne County Community College. They're going to be hosting our summer school program. This district program is going to be at the middle school this year. So, we decided not to do our own. We're going to partner with them. They're going to set it all up. They did it last year. They did one piece of it. They had some great programs, you know, sport, sports, athletic skills. They had forensic science. They had photography. They had a lot of different choices for the kids. And so, we've already met with the president and vice president of Wayne County Community College to strengthen that partnership. They're very reasonably priced. They charged us $40 a student, I think, last year, which, in the grand scheme of things, is super cheap. Plus, we have a great opportunity. We can bus, we pick them up at their houses, we bus them there, we bring them back, and it helps just to keep everybody in one spot. So, the second thing also, part of the grant is to increase the rigor of our curriculum. We looked at, last year, we sent students to the STEM program at University of Michigan. It was, it was great. It was excellent. It was very costly to send the students, but they, it was a huge benefit for those kids that needed that enrichment. But the issue became is on Fridays, the district is closed, and so, we didn't have any bus transportation for them. So, if their parents couldn't drive them out to Ann Arbor, they really missed a whole day of that instruction. So, actually, this year, Wayne County RISA is offering four classes that are STEM programs, STEM program-based, which is science, technology, mathematics, and engineering. So, we're going to send some kids to that, and again, it's pretty reasonably cost, and then it's close transportation as well. So, those are the four things we're going to do to address the summer slide, to address those, you know, the declining scores over the summer, is we're going to look at the "I am the Difference" and the "Power Up for MEEP." We're going to look at our STEM programs in the summer, and then our partnership with Wayne County Community College. The MEEP also, the Power Up for MEEP, is going to be a one- or two-week program in the end of the summer, just to get kids ready, start thinking about the MEEP. It's going to be, you know, a lot of skill-based instruction. So, that will be taught by our own teachers. Hopefully, we'll be having some teachers at the middle school, but we'll be able to offer it to, you know, elementary teachers as well that are, you know, extremely familiar with the MEEP, so. So, that's what we're looking at for the summer slide. Engaging students and parents are, let me go back. Does anybody have any questions about that at all?
Program at Wayne County, are they going to be at the middle school or at?
No, they're going to be at Wayne County Community College. So, we will bus kids over there.
Okay.
I've got a question about the bus. Who's doing the bus? In our staff?
Always our staff.
Okay.
Always our staff. Okay? So, we're, the next, anything else about the summer slide? We're, you know, I have to give credit to Scott and the school improvement team. They're the ones that came up with the idea, came up with the program. You know, Scott's our data guru, so he helped to identify the students. I found a few mistakes in what he came up originally, right? Which was the first time in like two years. He had a list of 115, he was only supposed to have 80, but. So, we did that, and then, you know, they came up and they planned this out, and they came up with the names and the graphics, and they're really ready to go. So, you know, tomorrow, please feel free in the morning to stop by and sort of see that presentation that they're going to be doing with the kids and with the parents. What time? What time? Nine o'clock tomorrow, and then Wednesday is 9:30. So, one of the, also, you know, we talk about a lot of the interactions with students to students, student to teacher, teacher to teacher, and also changing the culture of between students and parents. So, we have a couple programs that are coming up. Thank you. One of the things, first of all, about engaging our students and our parents, we have, Dr. Konfuju is coming on this Saturday. He wrote a book called Black Students, Middle Class Teachers. His premise talks a lot about, it's a really quick read. His premise talks a lot about middle-class values and how those impact the education of our black males. Okay? He, you know, obviously talks about race, but really looks at more the, whether you're black, white, you know, Asian, looks at our middle-class values and how we relate to our students. So, we're very excited about having him come. We had an arm wrestling match a couple years ago with Adolf Brown, who came, Dr. Brown, Rebecca won out that time. So, when I had an opportunity to have care over funds, I got to have Dr. Konfuju come. So, he's going to be coming. We have approximately about 70 to 100 people that are going to be coming. We offered it to the middle school staff first, and then anyone else in the district, and then now we're starting to sort of, you know, offer it if there's other educators that we know of people. We just have to make sure we only have room for 100 people, so we have enough room. So, that's going to be on Saturday. We're extremely excited. It just so happened that he was here for a conference on Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. We just asked him to stay over on the Saturday, and he agreed to, so we're very excited. Our next project in two weeks, so that sort of leads up, that starts the conversation of us talking about class and talking about race and how it impacts education. So, the next piece then comes on May 12. We're having the Parent Home Visitation Project, who's coming in to do the training. That is part of, will be funded through the NEA Priority Schools. What that does is it really looks at, we're going to be partnering with Hale Creek Elementary, so there will be teachers from there, teachers from the middle school, and also, you know, it's open to all staff that want to be involved. And they're going to be trained about making two half-hour visits to the incoming fifth grade parents. Okay? That's our focus right now. Depending on how many people we get involved, we're going to start with the fifth grader students coming over from Hale Creek, and then we'll expand from there. They have these meetings between now and the fall. They have their first meeting, and then sometime throughout the school year, they have their second meeting. The premise of it is that we have a lot of parents that are skeptical about coming into the school, a lot of parents that had negative experiences about coming into the school or see us as, you know, the enemy or the opposition, and we want to break down those barriers. We want to go out to them. We want to be able to communicate with them and be able to let them know that their child is, you know, we're here to work in the best interest of their child. So, the program has been extremely successful in a lot of cities across the country. We were chosen because of our union and district partnership through the NEA Priority Schools. They will be funding all the training, all the people coming in, all the materials, all the stipends, everything will be paid for through the NEA. So, again, another project we're really excited about. So, what that then will lead into, we decided to put it off to the fall, is the community conversation, where, again, it's an NEA Priority School-funded operation. They'll give us approximately $5,000 to $10,000. They bring in sort of professionals that will look at how to set up a community conversation to talk about our schools, to talk about the transition from elementary school to middle school, why our students are coming, why our students are leaving, to really have some open and honest dialogue between parents, community members, Board of Educations, staff, and students. They come in, they facilitate this. We also train people to become, you know, small group facilitators, and then out of this, we come up with an action plan, and then they have some follow-up with us as well. Again, they pay for the stipends, they pay for the food, they pay for the training. This is another service because of our, you know, continued partnership. So, we're going to look at, starting this in the fall, we're going to do some planning at the end of the school year into the summer, and then this will be something the first month of September, we'll start rolling out with the parents. So, looking at these three things, they sort of, they go right with each other and progress us into that area of, you know, student engagement and the area of parent engagement, which are two, you know, keys to any successful turnaround. Questions about that program before those things coming up?
When are you doing the training?
The, Dr. Konfuju is this Saturday from 9 to 12.
The staff training for the home visits.
The home visits is May 12, and I believe it's from like 9 to 1. If you want to stop by for part of the time, you want to come by for the whole time, what we're, what we're telling staff and what they're saying is that, you know, anybody can come and get the training. Just because you come and do the training doesn't necessarily mean you're going to commit to do the project. We're hoping they all will, but some people will get there and realize that this isn't for me. I mean, this is a huge, you know, step outside your comfort zone, going into people's homes and going.
Is that at the middle school?
It's at the middle school, yes.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So, we move into our financial compensation. One of the things this year is we have a financial compensation piece, which is part of the SIG grant. We allocated approximately $100,000 towards that. We had three goals. One was achievement, one was student staff attendance, and the third area was parent engagement and student engagement activities. So, what we're going to look at is, the last time we looked at the data for the attendance, we saw the attendance was down, so we made positive, they were absent less. So, we did make some positive gains in that area. In a couple weeks, we'll have our final numbers. So, what we have is our MEEP, our whole school growth target. Everybody in our building is eligible for this money. Our first goal that we came up with was the average of students meeting or exceeding the NWA growth target from fall to spring across reading and math. So, what we said was, is the students took the first test, and then NWA calculates a growth score. So, where should they be at the end of, at the end of the school year? How many points should they grow? Not necessarily back onto grade level, but how many points should they grow in the normal years of instruction? So, you can see that then it was divided into three tiers. So, we have a Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. Tier 3 was a little below where we were last year. Tier 2 is pushing us a little bit, and I mean, Tier 2, and then Tier 1, you know, is reasonable and obtainable. But it's going to, you know, for us, it's going to take a big effort over the next five or six weeks to really get those, you know, kids performing on the NWA. We've been doing more intervention time with our kids in our classroom, encouraging more one-on-one tutoring during, you know, lunch, where they can also earn points towards their financial compensation. So, you know, just by this, as of now, everybody in our building would receive the Tier 3 financial compensation. So, that's what we're working towards. This is the whole school growth. So, the second piece is our special education growth target. We know that special education is a huge area of need within our building, and what we looked at again was how, what goals, what goals can we set in order to make sure our focus is on special education along with our general education students? So, as you can see, we're looking at, again, Tier 3, Tier 2, Tier 1. We wanted to make our goals, you know, obviously somewhat reachable, but also pushing us. So, we're pretty confident we'll get over that Tier 2. We're hoping to get to that Tier 1. Keep reversing it. By the end of the school year, but we'll have to wait to see. We'll be really interested to see how the whole package works out. You know, we could end up with a lot of money left over. We could end up, you know, spending it all. It just sort of depends on how things shake out. But we have had a lot of involvement with parent activities, with, you know, tutoring during the school day, committee involvement, et cetera. So, we're pretty excited. It's a new concept. It's not something that everybody accepts in the state of Michigan, so we wanted to be on the forefront of this. So, those are our two goals that we have. Any questions about those? Okay. I think that's it. That's it today. I'm surprised. I mean, I, you know, had a whole 20-slide presentation, but.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
Good information, Jason. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll come and see what happens with all of this.
We are too. We're going to, we're going to start looking, you know, again, start looking at sustainability. We've, we have the opportunity to add a couple intervention teachers next year, so we're going to, you know, really continue, you know, digging in.
Yeah. I like the community piece especially. See how that goes.
Yeah. We've really, you know, I mean, to be honest, we've struggled with it. I mean, I think a lot of schools struggle with it. So, I think this, this home visitation project is really going to be, is going to stretch the professional, you know, responsibility of teachers and then also, you know, parents. It's going to be interesting to see how it works out. I mean, I'm excited. They're excited to come in and do it. We're one of the only priority schools, us and Saginaw in Michigan, so, you know, they love pouring in the resources for us.
Yeah. And free answers all questions, right?
Sometimes.
Yeah.
So, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Salhaney.
You're welcome. Did your nephew tell you he joined my book club?
Yes, he did. Because he's reading a book. Yes, he did.
He showed up. Is that you? Is he going to give brother-in-law?
Yes.
Okay. So, he showed up to pick up some of the kids, and one of the kids said, "I'm not going to be in the book club anymore." I'm like, "Oh, no, yeah." So, I gave him the book, and then I gave your brother-in-law the book, and now they're all in the book club. He loved it.
He did tell me that. Because I asked him what he was reading, and that's exactly what it was.
Well, thank you, Romulus Middle School, and as Mr. Weiss would say, you know, we certainly appreciate you being here, but you've been on the clock for a long time. So, you're welcome to stay, but we understand. Thank you.
Please feel free to stop by anytime. We'd love to, you know, show you around, take you around. We've gotten, I'm out to see some great press lately, you know, lots of stuff to really be proud of. I know it puts us in the spotlight, takes some good attention, but we're going to have the results behind us, so stop by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on, on the agenda from the report of the superintendent is the renewal of the Chartwell's contract. We have, Ms. Kathy Nord is out in the audience. She's our Food Services Manager/ Director, so she's here to answer any questions, as well as Sherry, if you, if the Board has any questions with regard to the motion.
So, this is pretty much a boilerplate. You've seen this the last few years. All of the increases are in the contract verbatim. It basically says that the increase would be the Consumer Price Index for urban consumer food away from home, 3% or less. In this case, this year, it's 2.9%, so it's actually less than the maximum that they're allowed to charge us, and that's in relation to the management fee and the administrative fees. The equivalent mail factor is actually set by the USDA, so we have no control over that. And again, pretty much boilerplate. We are in our third year of this contract. We have two years to go.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Move the Education, the Board of Education accept the Director of Business and Operations recommendation to renew the contract with Chartwell School Dining Services for the 2012-13 school year with the outlined contractual changes. Support.
Motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Mr. Thede. Mr. McLaughlin, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to share with Board members, I got a phone call on this the other day, and I clarified it, at least I think I did, because it's something that comes up every year, but the administrative fees, that's not going to our manager, that's not going to Ms. Nord. Sorry to put you on the spot. That's, as you said, in the contract, that's what Chartwell's Inc.
That's correct.
is getting.
That's correct.
I just don't want, well, because the challenge that was put to me was, here we have all our employees not getting raises. Yeah, so that's, that's what that is.
Any other?
Nope.
I just had one question. This doesn't affect the prices that we're charging our students now. Just want to make sure.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy, for being here.
Great. Okay, our next item is School of Choice, 2012-13. This does require a motion, which is before you. Just to give you a little background information, this brings in between 30 and 40 students per year for Romulus schools. It is for K-8 and grade 12 only. Grade 12, as some of you, most of you already know, is just for, we have that on there so that our seniors that move out their senior year have the option to stay at Romulus, even if they move outside of our borders and graduate with us. 10 grade per maximum, which is, which is in your supporting information. This does reduce, it actually eliminated all of the splits when we originally instituted it, and we have had no splits. We didn't have any splits this year. Our hope is to keep those splits out of the classrooms as much as possible.
Need a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education continue the Schools of Choice program and declare all school grades K through 8 and 12 as limited Schools of Choice under Section 105 of School Code. Enrollment will be limited to 10 slots per grade, kindergarten through eighth grade and 12th grade.
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mr. Kudrick. Are there any questions?
Is that 10 slots per grade per school, or is that per district?
That's district. That's district-wide.
So, a max of 90 students.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Motion is on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Our next item is Summer School Plans Discussion. Dr. Daniels is here to just give the Board a quick update on what's going on with our elementary summer school planning.
There.
Yes. There it is.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really excited.
You know, we had an opportunity to just talk about our summer program, you know, last week. But we're pleased that for the elementary schools, we're gonna be able to have a summer program. I was listening to Mr. Selhaney when he was talking about that summer dip. I was a teacher who looped with students during my career and I was one who had said, sometimes I would look back and say what the teacher that they had before didn't do. And then I had students one year and I had them the next year and they didn't remember a lot of what I knew I had taught. So, that let me know that there really was a summer dip that was going on. So, you know, we're really pleased that we're gonna be able to offer a program this, this year for our students. Section 31A is going to be able to pay for it and that's a grant, that is a state grant, and it will cover the, all of the costs, including transportation for our kids this summer. We are going to be starting the program. It will run from July the 23rd to August the 23rd. And we don't have it starting right after school gets out because that's gonna give kids an opportunity to get out and rest a little bit and then start to, you know, for kids, they're, once they're out a couple weeks, they're ready to go back. So, they'll be ready to go back. We figure parents will be ready for them to go back by then, too. So, it's gonna work out very well. The program is gonna be held at Wick School. One of the things that we're currently working on are our T-L-Ws. And those are our, the learner wills. What we're looking at is some very specific things and some specific expectation for our students. So, what we're looking at is after they've been with us in our summer program, we're going to expect them to be able to do some very specific things, some skills we're going after. Part of it will be in preparation for tests that we're, that are gonna be coming up in the fall. But we also are looking at some of those core skills that kids need to have in order to be successful going forward. We're currently looking at one to two field trips that will support whatever those areas are that we're going to be talking about. Our content focus is going to be science and math. Science is going to be what we use to get our reading in. So, whatever we're reading is gonna kind of be built around science topics. Then we are also going after those math skills also. So, we're going to not only be looking at, you know, the good old learning, your multiplication facts and your addition facts, but also the reasoning skills. So, we're really pleased. We're looking at doing a lot of brain-based activities that will include a lot of hands-on, music, drama, you know, woven into the activities. You know, I'm an old theater person, so I expect them to learn a lot and do a lot and present a lot. And those are the kinds of activities that kids really remember and it also really helps them retain the, the information that they learn. So, we're excited. We're gonna be having a couple of newsletters coming out and we've got some things that we want parents to do. So, you know, we're, we're really looking forward to the summer and we're ratcheting up our planning, you know, real, real good. So, if something comes across your mind that you think might fit in there, be sure to let us know. Does anyone have any questions?
I had a question about enrollment for the kids. Will they be notified by mail or is it going to go out to them before they dismiss for the summer? How, how are you handling that?
How are we gonna do? Before, before there's a dismissal from the summer, we're going to be making sure the kids know.
Okay.
Do you know how far in advance you're gonna do it? 'Cause I know families who practice, you know, some may be planning vacations for this, whether you know...
Right now, we're working on trying to pull it all together as quickly as, as possible. We're, we're going to be taking a look at the next round of tests that the kids are, are going to be taking because the first priority are gonna be for those kids who are in need the most. But then, you know, as we can add additional students in, you know, we will. But we're, we're trying really hard. If we can get the information out by, at least by mid-May, that's what we're shooting for.
Madam Chair, what's our capacity, Dr. Daniels, for students? How many students?
For the summer? We, we've been kind of working through those numbers. We wanna do the maximum that we can and really, we're looking, we're focusing on trying to get at least 200 students, more if possible. That is gonna also help determine what some of the other kinds of activities that we do, you know, depending on how many students we have. But the minimum is 200 and we're looking for 2 to maybe 350, somewhere in that range.
Anybody else had another question? I just had one additional question. And that was, I know when we did our summer program at Romulus Elementary, they opened it up to the residents of Romulus. Will it be the same or will it just be our current student body?
This is gonna be our current student body.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thede.
Thank you. So exciting to think about our students getting that extra boost, you know.
I'm sorry. Pass it down.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is for teacher layoff.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin.
I've moved, due to reasons of projected decline in student enrollment and financial exigency, that the Board of Education of Romulus Community Schools accepts the recommendation of the administration to lay off the individuals listed in our attachment effective at the end of the day, June 14th, 2012. Support question.
Moved by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Mr. Cooterick. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rebecca, I'm sorry. I meant, I, I didn't realize that this was a seniority list. Are we not at that point with the evaluation process yet to not necessarily call people back by seniority or is it because they're still a bargain agreed?
It's still, we're still under the collective bargaining agreement, which goes through 2013.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Rebecca, I know we do this every year. How many did we laugh last year? Do you remember?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure, but I will get you that information.
And how many did we call back? Do you remember that?
All but two.
All but, all but two. Right.
The ones that are...
Yeah. I thought 12. 12 but 13.
It's about the same.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, item F, receipt of FOIA request and special meeting. This is the point where we're going to have a discussion about that. The FOIA request that is in question right now is the original FOIA that was sent to my office. That, that request was denied and then they went, the, the person that requested that FOIA went through the appeal process and all of you should have received that appeal via email stating the reasons why they felt that the FOIA request should be honored. The point of today's meeting is the board has to make it, is going to have to make a decision on that. They're going to have to decide, really, one of three things. They're gonna have to decide to uphold the denial decision. They're going to have to decide to reverse the denial decision in full or they're gonna have to decide to reverse the denial decision in part. There are, there are some legal ramifications to whatever decision that you make and it's the recommendation of this administration that this board receives some legal consult on May 1st from their lawyer with regard to the, all of the ramifications, no matter what decision you make, what the ramifications of those decisions could be. One more thing. Tonight is the night where the clock starts ticking on the FOIA request. When you convene as a governing body after the FOIA request is received is when the clock starts ticking. So, we have 10 days to respond to this FOIA request. It's due May 3rd.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Again, I, I respect the fact that the administration, and obviously, I'm the one that submitted the FOIA for anyone that may think that's a secret. I respect the fact that the administration feels that they need further clarification from the attorneys, even though every member here has received both letters that both our attorney and the Michigan Association of School Boards' legal counsel has submitted. But my point about the May 1st meeting, that's fine and wonderful. I would strongly encourage that meeting to not be held in executive session as it's been proposed by the superintendent. There's no legal basis for an executive session to discuss a FOIA request. If somebody can show me that in the Open Meetings Act, then I'll be happy to retract that statement. But there is absolutely no legal basis to warrant an executive session with an attorney.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Buckley.
The response we got back from our attorney.
Today.
Did that, does that address?
Yeah. I, because I, when Mr. McLaughlin sent it off to me, I forwarded then to our attorney for his opinion and he emailed back saying that we were fine. So...
He is the board's lawyer, right?
Exactly.
So, if there's something that we need to know and we wanna be clear on as a body, then we can ask for this.
We refer to Calatoma. Exactly.
Okay. That's what I need to know.
Just a point of clarification. If the attorney proves to be wrong in that, is he gonna write the check for the fine? I'm not talking about the FOIA request. I'm talking about the executive session.
You're answering a question that I don't have an answer to.
I'd appreciate getting one. He's getting you advice that's based on information that's not before him.
How is that not before him?
Do you want me to read the FOIA request?
You can, if you like.
I guess, I, I guess my...
There is no legal basis for, unless the district specifies, the Board of Education, if you decide you're gonna go into executive session. A, you have to name the case. It has to be pending litigation. You cannot go into an executive session just to merely discuss a letter. Have we been doing it? Yes. Is that practice gonna stop? Yes. We are gonna go by the book. We are not gonna have executive sessions that are not in conformity with OMA.
I guess what I, I guess my question, I guess my thing would be, we have a lawyer that we pay for, so whatever ramifications are, then our lawyer has to deal with it.
Exactly.
So, if, I think he has a law degree, so he, he should probably know those things. And if he's wrong, I'm sure that he will...
He would have to own up to it. Right.
And we will go from there, but...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cooterick.
Has the attorney been sent the FOIA request?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, Madam Chairman, because it's, this has not been out there other than folks within our email circle. The FOIA request is for an official release of the superintendent's complete evaluation document that was filled out by all seven board members in accordance with the law. If any would, would like a copy of my FOIA request, see me after the meeting and I'll get your email address and send it to you.
All right. So, we're all good? So, May 1st at 5:00 PM, Gary King will be here to advise us on the legal ramifications of this FOIA request and whether we uphold it, reverse it in whole, or reverse it in part.
All right.
So, May 1st at 5:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next item. The agreement with the Wayne, Wayne Family Health Centers. You have before you a motion that puts us into a relationship with the, I have to get this right, the Wayne Family Health Centers. I wanna switch some words around there. I don't know why.
You wanna add county, don't you?
Right.
Is it Wayne Western? A Western Wayne Family Health Center? So, this, this organization would take over for where, was it Oakwood?
It was Oakwood.
Yeah. So, they would, they would, they would use the space that Oakwood was using for our teen health center. They would be taking over those resources. So, what we're, what we're looking at today is not an, an emotion to go into partnership with them exclusively without a contract before us. What we have before us today is a motion to enter into a memorandum of understanding that we're going to work out an agreement with them. We're, you're going to make a motion on that agreement as well. So, you're not painting yourself into a corner as far as, you know, whatever they present to us, we have to accept. We're just right now saying, let's get together as a group, sit down and say, okay, this is what you can provide, this is what we'll provide.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair. Recommend the motion move the Board of Education adopt the participation resolution as presented and authorize the superintendent to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Western Wayne Family Health Center for the operation of the health center at the Romulus Senior High School.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Cooterick, supported by Mrs. Buckley. Questions? Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Western Wayne Family Health Centers, is that a nonprofit or a for-profit agency?
You know, I'm not sure, but I will find that out for the board. So, you'd like to know what the business classification is?
Absolutely. Please. I'm, in an email that I sent with the superintendent, which he did answer my questions and I appreciate that. I'm not comfortable with, quote, "outside patients" coming into the clinic. I understand that they're using the side entrance, but they're still gonna be in the lobby of the clinic, potentially with students, potentially with minor students. I had an issue with that, both a safety and a, and a HIPAA issue. And I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that. I'll be voting accordingly.
I know...
In the past, it was the same.
It was the same. Yeah. It was the same. And I don't know if they made, because we've used the services before because my daughter would go to get her sports physicals there, which were normally in the summertime. So, I'm not exactly sure what the frequency would be of, you know, community.
Also, the agreement that we have, and this is, was my personal experience with it as I sent students over there as well, was that a parent, when they, when they registered their student and they said it was okay for them to, for us to send students there that were under the legal age, parents had to sign off that we could go ahead and do that.
Oh, I...
Okay.
That's not what I'm...
So, otherwise, students don't go there without their permission.
I go there for medical services. There's students there in, in the same clinic at the same time. And to Mrs. Kraut's concern, that, you know, that's the way it was done with Oakwood. With all due respect, I wasn't here to vote on Oakwood's contract. That came before I did. I am here to vote on this one and I'm not comfortable with it. I'm also not comfortable with them administering a health survey. That's something our guidance counselors need to be administering. Our students shouldn't need to be discussing any confidential information with a third party that we don't know what their use for those survey results are gonna be.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms...
Just a question. Our Healthy Living Committee used to work real close with this center. I don't know if that's gonna still be the case. 'Cause I know in administering surveys, it's some, you know, we kinda did that hand in hand with some of the school administration and, you know, with the board, a whole Healthy Living Committee.
Right.
So, I'm not sure if that would be the case again or not. But I know they used to work hand in hand.
Well, yeah, I know our, we used to do it before, but this letter of understanding says that we shall give them the authority to do it. And that's, that's kinda where I'm having a sticking point.
Well, what I was saying is maybe we can work something out, or maybe it has to be in conjunction with our Healthy Living Committee or something like that. Maybe that's something that could be worked out.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when we go into the bunch, maybe.
Right.
You know, especially if we know, well, especially, yeah, we have to prove it. So, especially if we know that's a point of contention, maybe that's something we can work out before it comes before.
And the survey's gotta come to maybe the Healthy Living Committee before it goes.
Right.
It's just that magic word, "shall." It's...
Ms. Peck, could you also find out what the operation hours are? Because if I remember right, they were talking about some extended hours after school. So, maybe that might be where the, the outside members were, might be coming in at that time.
And I, and I believe that would be part of whatever operations agreement that we came to.
Right. If I remember right, there was some discussion about hours after school and I think that's where the issue of people coming into the building.
Right. How that was addressed.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that was part of it.
One of the things, I'm just reading the responses for, from Carl to Mr. McLaughlin in regards to his questions, are the first questions were, "What are the costs?" There are no costs other than those related to the space we provide utilities. There, he addressed the nine student patients visiting the clinic. Are they going to be doing so during student hours? And he shared how he's uncomfortable with co-mingling of the students and the general public. He said, Mr. Weiss's responses, "I believe the answer to this is yes, the clinic has an outside interest, entrance for this reason. The Oakland Clinic also serves community members." The third question is, "Are the clinic hours going to be steady?" The answer to that was yes. The agreement of operation mentioned in the memorandum of understanding and resolution, I'd like to review this before he votes. I'd like to know what students will be offered, birth control, advice, counseling, immunizations, et cetera. The answer is, "The agreement of operation has not yet been created. Once the funding is approved, an agreement will be drafted." The district will have input on this agreement. And then he talked about the word "shall" and with respect to allowing health surveys, And then, he talked about the word "shall" with respect to allowing health surveys, especially when they didn't know the scope or the distribution of the same. Is there a precedent for allowing these surveys to be conducted by outside parties of our students? Where does this fall with FERPA requirements? The health surveys, Michigan Youth Risk Behavior surveys, have been conducted bi-annually in Romulus for many years, both at the high school and junior high levels through the Michigan Model Health Program. We could choose not to participate, but that would make us ineligible for many programs that benefit our students. No individual student information from these surveys is released. However, the state uses the information to assess the impact of the health curriculum on student behaviors.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
That's not the same survey. That is one that's done every other year by us through the Healthy Living Committee and through our counseling staff. This, what Western Wayne Medical Centers is asking for is an annual survey that they administer and that they will work with us on the distribution of the results of that survey. That says to me, they're going to use it possibly to apply for funding, to apply for maybe commercial advertising. I don't know what they're going to use it for. It's not something we administer.
On here, it, go ahead.
This says every three years.
Every three years, and that. The results would.
It may be, I may have missed that.
It says "shall be" every three years.
It's item two.
Maybe we can do something like this to be agreement. I know they want to do surveys because they want to find the impact, but maybe we can put a clause into the.
Every three years.
Agreement that any of the surveys that are distributed to the students must be approved or reviewed by the board prior to. So, that way, at least everybody on the board will see what they're asking and what the purpose of it, so this way we know.
Well, it says prior to administering the survey, the survey document, process of completion, and plan for distribution of results will be submitted to the Board of Education for approval. So, we will see it before it goes, before anything is done.
However, for their application for the funding, we're submitting a document that says "we shall."
Where are you reading that at?
Just about every paragraph.
Well, I guess, is that something we can work out with?
Can we table it?
I mean, can we work that out with the understanding?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't got the understa, this is just the agreement to go in where they can start working on it.
Right, right.
And if we know those are some of the things that.
Right. Take out the word "shall," see if they'll remove that.
Work it out.
Right.
I just want to get into a back and forth about something that's not even, we haven't even, so maybe it's something that, let's say, with, to Mr. McGlocklin's point of contention with it, let's say, maybe that's something we can work out, and when it comes back, we can have a look at it.
So, right, I, yeah, and I think at this point, I mean, my opinion is that we have kind of a hole in our services that are available for our students right now without having Oakwood there. An opportunity to fill that hole, but we're not doing everything at once here.
Right, what's the, do they have like a timeframe that they're working within for this?
Yes.
I think they wanted originally, they wanted to get it first of January originally, but.
Pete Bergeron mentioned to me at the chamber meeting last week that they're under a June 1st deadline.
Is there some funding tied to that?
That's when they need to get this application in, so, you know.
And he's a little under the weather, he just had surgery today, so.
Yeah, that's true.
And the next regular meeting isn't until the end of May, so.
Well, they've got to work on, they've got to work on the resolution, on getting the agreement. This is just allowing, allowing them to give us, give us some input. We're still going to vote on that, the agreement, when it comes back, so. We've got to start it, I mean, it's a service that's provided to the community and students need it. A lot of students within the school, you know, while they're there, they don't have to take a day off to go get a sports physical. I mean, they can do it right there, and which is nice. The parents don't have to transport them out of school or back and forth, so we can always reject or accept the.
The operation.
Right. Right now, this is just letting them get started.
So, is everybody comfortable, or are we looking to put this to the side and come back to it? Okay.
No, we didn't vote, we're still in discussion.
We have, just, yeah, it's a motion by Kudrick, supported by Ms. Buckley. So, are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Last item, our information, great information from all the schools you have in your board packet, including Barth Weekly Updates, Hail Creek Newsletters, the Wingspan is in there, so get your eyeglasses on, please.
I know.
Community High School has their April newsletter, and so does Chart Wells, what's going on over there?
Rob's oxygen machine's going on.
There's no ticking, right?
No.
Okay. Sherry, facilities, anything?
Alright, so that concludes the report of the superintendent. Now, we're at the point of communications and expressions from the public, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name. I want to say Alask, Alaskois? Okay, I'm sorry, if you could be so kind as to use the microphone so our viewers at home can hear your lovely voice. Is it the water?
Thank you.
She's fine tuned it. At the bottom, I think.
It should be the top one.
Holly, would you want to help her out?
Madam Chairperson, the last time I was in this room, I actually was sitting in your chair. I was president of the board. I think Rob is the only person sitting up there that I know now, because it's been 12 delightful years that I haven't had to come up here. My husband warned me, so be good. My daughter, your class valedictorian of 1998, and her husband, and my wonderful three-year-old granddaughter have recently moved back to Romulus. My daughter is a very successful clinical research monitor, my son-in-law is a computer programmer, and God knows if you guys ever need data about anything, they can dig it up. So, last night when my daughter ran over at about 9:00 o'clock at night before she was heading to the airport to fly to Montreal for a meeting this morning, she said, "Oh, my God, Mom, I did not realize the schools were as bad as they are." Now, I have tried really hard to stay out of things because I don't have a dog in the fight right now at all, but she went to a website called www.scooldigger.com, and it ranks school districts within our state on three criteria. Professional state exam result, or proficiency state exam results, graduation rates, and percentage of students going on to post-secondary education. Anybody want to guess where we are? Oh, we're not at the bottom, River Rouge has that, but they're ranking 618 districts, as they call them now. I didn't realize that a particular charter school was an entity of its own now, but of those, we're number 492. Wow, guys. I'm not impressed, I'm sorry, I'm just not. I think above all, what this school district needs are some historians. Number one, I was on the committee that started the teen health centers, it was called then, and Mr. McGlocklin is right. In the original paperwork, there were to be no surveys conducted that weren't totally confidential and through the school district only. No one else was to be involved at all, and there was also no co-mingling between the general public and the students in the school using those services. I listened to the very nice program, and oh, I really commend you for working at the middle school. One of my very good friends just graduated, retired from 36 years teaching middle school. He has four hairs left. And I listened to the program, and I think, oh, my gosh, nothing ever changes. When I was on the board, we all went and got trained in this wonderful program that had a triad, parents, schools, students. And we had a parent, student, school compact that every teacher, every student, every parent. And we had committees made up of community members who decided what was going to go on. We had community members who decided what was going to go on with the teen health center. We had a policy committee that had committee members that were involved in the community. We had a curriculum committee that was involved, because how do we know if we are attaining goals for our product? I totally disagree that schools or government should be run like a business. We're not a business. We've got a totally different matrix than a business. But, if that's the way we're going to be judged, what our product is like, how do we know if we're succeeding if we live in a bubble of academia? After I got off the board and my daughter went to Western, I went crazy because I have a spoiled-only kid, and I missed her like crazy, and I thought, I'm going to do something totally out of character, and I became a flight attendant. And then I became a trainer of flight attendants. And I was appalled at these little sweet young things who would come to me the day after graduation with their skirts hemmed up to here, and I would say, "Oh, no, 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 it has to touch your kneecap. You can't make me do that." It's like, yeah, I'm your employer, you don't get a gold star anymore, you get a paycheck in two weeks if you conform with what's going on. So, I guess what I'm saying is that I never read anything about you guys asking for anything from the community other than dollars. And please, Mr. Kudrick, I've been hearing rumors that we're going to, once again, this is old news, threaten transportation if the millage doesn't pass. Don't do it. Like I say, you need a historian. The last board who did that, who threatened it, got their millage passed, and by the next fall, not one of them were sitting up here, they were all recalled. Because there is a state law, you cannot take transportation away in a community like ours for K through 3. And if your attorney tells you different, Ms. Buckley, I'm sorry that, I know people who have law degrees that I wouldn't ask what date I should set my trash out on. So, you know, I'm hoping we have confidence, we did when I was on the board, but I just want, I want you guys to get the community involved. You're all good people. The four years I served on the board were the longest four years of my life. You could never make anyone happy. And it didn't matter whether, and, you know, you need to just constantly reinforce one thing. You took on this thankless job for the kids. You are here for the children. When I look at these test scores, I think, oh, my God, because my daughter was the only student in this district who ever attended the University of Michigan as a sophomore dual-enrolling. You know what they had for gifted kids when my kid was growing up in this district? Nothing, what do we have now? I would bet nothing. It's wonderful that we're trying to bring test scores up, but what about doing things for the bright kids too? And you're not, I know you're not, and I know it's always funny because that's what it always is, but you have resources in this community. You have former students who are doctors, who are attorneys, who are business owners, who have come back here. For God's sakes, get them involved, let these little kids in elementary school see that, yes, you can come from Romulus and you can be successful, and your parents can see that you can go to school in Romulus and become something. Get the community involved, and then you won't be fighting these millages. Because I know, I was on the board when we had no labor contracts and Proposal A came into effect.
Bless your heart.
And, you know, so I understand your struggles, and I'm not trying to be critical of you personally, but something needs to change. Or, when we look at 492, and yet our salaries are 58th in the state? It just doesn't look so good, and I want more than that, I want to be proud of my school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have to practice your last name. That'll be my test, is to practice your, pronouncing your last name. Okay, right, nice and easy. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate your comments. I don't have anything else in front of me, I don't know if any other person wanted to come up and speak. And so, we are now at the questions and/or concerns of board members, and I am going to do my traditional roundtable and start with Mr. Thied.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley.
This is Honorable Assembly this week.
The, for National Honor Society?
National Honor Society induction ceremony, which is Thursday at 7:00.
Yes.
And this is our busy time, so. Put your running shoes on.
Right.
That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraut.
Well, Wednesday is Student of the Month, as well as the Bambooster Spaghetti fundraiser for scholarships.
That's Wednesday?
Yes.
Right.
Don't scare me. I thought you said you went there.
No.
Same night, but it's, one starts at 6, the dinner starts at 6, and the Student of the Month starts at 7, so I can make them both, so that's good. And Thursday's at 7:00.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Okay, Mr. McGlocklin?
Thank you. I'll start off with, today I went to the, I'm sorry about the oxymoron, but the Annual Governor's Education Summit. Thank you, Teresa, for catching me here.
I got it.
The theme this year fits in right with our motto. The theme this year is achieving anytime, anyplace, anywhere, any pace. I attended several breakouts, but the most important ones were, one on collaborations between ISDs and local school districts. There's the trend, we've all heard the buzzword, best practices. There's trend for ISDs to assume, I don't want to say assume administrative roles, but they're assuming traditional administrative functions at the ISD level. Granted, Wayne ISD is a little larger than some of these other ISDs in the state, but it's something worth looking at. I also attended one on building community and business partnerships that I really think we can do a little bit better job at. But the most important one was on early college, and I know Mr. Kudrick has brought it up before, I've brought it up, other board members have brought it up. Honestly, I can't say there's a good reason for us not to offer an early college program. It's a five-year high school program, and the students in their junior and senior year, junior and senior traditional year, take morning classes that are high school curriculum, AP, et cetera, and in the afternoon, they take college classes. And then their fifth year of high school, the same thing, but it's only two high school classes that they're taking, the rest are college. And this is being done at Lexington, Cogswella, is it? Somewhere over in the west side of the state, it's called CL5. They have a 100% success rate. It is a cost-neutral program for them. We receive all the FTEs, the community college just charges the per-credit hour. It's something I really urge us to look forward to. I think it's something to gain students. There's another thing, and I'm going to ask you to remember this, lookimlearning.org. Lookimlearning.org. It is a fantastic, it's done by the Educator of the Year. She is, they're doing a documentary that's going to be released commercially as well. We saw the trailer of it today. It's kindergarten and second graders at a particular school in Luddington, which is one of the poorest school districts in the state. They qualified for a grant to get the iPads in the kids' hands, and they had a 16% bump in their means, in their first year.
Wow.
That's remarkable. And given the fact and what the discussion was today was, all the money we budget for textbooks, traditionally, not necessarily we right now, could be used towards getting classroom sets of these so that eventually we do this. We can also look at grants and corporate partnerships and all that other goodness, but it's just something that I think we really need to look into. I had a couple of questions, and Rebecca, I'm sorry if you've got to field these, but if you can, you know, just relay them and get back with me. The email that we got from the Little League Baseball, has that matter been resolved?
I'm going to say, I don't know, because I don't even know about it.
They were seeking, they were seeking permission to use the baseball diamonds again this year. I got forwarded the email because allegedly a phone call was not returned from a operations manager. The concern has been in the past, and I'm just voicing my opinion, I'm not going to speak for the others at the table. They've not been allowed to use, they, meaning Little League, has not been allowed to use the diamonds until after school dismisses, June 14th or whatever. To me, there's no logical reason for that, as long as our kids, you know, our school kids get priority scheduling and things, we don't play games on Saturdays and Sundays. So, you know, I would just appreciate that being looked into. Kindergarten Roundup is tomorrow at Cory, correct? Did there used to be a sign in front of Cory and somebody stole it? Or is there just not a sign in front of Cory saying hello, kindergarten roundup tomorrow?
I believe, I was just talking to a facilities person, and they said that it's on the bus.
There wasn't when I drove by at 5:00 o'clock today. Well, and, you know, I mean, we've got a sign in front of Merriman. And maybe Wick, you know, but it just struck me as odd that we have a major kindergarten roundup going tomorrow, and there's not a plywood sign up on the, on the lawn of the school, I, it just-
There used to be one on the end down there.
I know, now there's a sign that says GSRP, you know, but there's no kindergarten thing, so, you know, it, it's a little odd. The, uh, after the meeting, Sherry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to stutter, uh, after the meeting, I'm going to give you, um, the name of somebody that would like to meet with the, with you and the curriculum director to discuss, uh, potential shared time possibilities, that could be a money-making thing for the district, it's kind of a trend that's going on, Ann Arbor and some other districts have signed on, and, you know, they want to talk to you, so I'll, I'll share that information with you. And, uh, the only other tidbit that I, that I have to offer right now, and this came from the superintendent in the school district that's doing the, uh, early college. They don't give, their valedictorians, they don't do valedictorians, number one, secondly, it's not based on GPA alone, they have a top ten, and what they do to, and this might be something worth us looking at, to drive home the importance of the ACT and the MME, they take those scores and do a mathematical calculation, and I can find out what that calculation is, if you'd like me to, and that's how they determine their top ten. So it's not just, quote, "The brainiac," it's the person, because, you know, there are some people in my history that have taken band three hours out of the day and ended up with a four-point-two GPA. You know, it, that's not necessarily reflective if they're not taking the ACT seriously and things. I think it, it takes us away from giving everyone a gold star, and it, it starts to drive home the importance of, of the ACT, so I, I think it's worth discussing. And thank you on the school digger, I'll look it up, thank you. Many of them do.
And, and associates.
And, and, yeah, sixty, this particular program was sixty-two credits, and it's through St. Ca- St. Clair County Community College, um, and Wayne County does a lot of dual enrollment, but it's, to my knowledge, Wayne County doesn't have a formal program, this is different than dual enrollment.
They don't have a middle college program through, not in Western, though, not Western Wayne County Community College.
They, maybe they haven't had a need for it, until maybe we should ask.
Well, I think that's out there.
I know Van Buren has a lot of them, there's a lot of students who go from Van Buren out there.
It, it's something I think that, that-
We should investigate.
If anything, it's an enticement, it's an enticement for, for students, and it's a, it's one heck of a savings for families.
Most definitely.
It's over, you know, just rude math, I'm sorry, rote math, is almost fourteen thousand dollars in savings for the average family. It's rude math, too, when you start talking about fourteen thousand, but, you know, that's very, that's serious money, and if we can save that for our community without us spending that fourteen thousand, to me, it's a no-brainer. That's all, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, that was some really good information, um, Mrs. Beard?
I have nothing, because Mrs. Buckley took all the steam with the honor stuff.
She stole your thunder, she stole your thunder.
Ditto. Mr. Kudrick?
Yes, Ashley, it's, I'm not sure what classification would fall in, but today I was at work, and I had the pleasure of being complimented on how some of our students acted, we had a tour come in of two buses from the Roma's, uh, Roma's Elementary came in for part of the Earth Day Project, and they came in, and I was pretty impressed, and I kind of stood up where I was working at a little bit, chest pumped out air, because they complimented so highly on how the students asked questions, and how they were polite, and the bus drivers and everything, and I was really, I was pretty proud of it, because for some reason, we're so close to where we are to the district, we're right across the street, but yet, that was really the only second time in eight years I've seen anybody from Romulus come there. Mrs. Peck brought some students from Community High about five years ago, and other than that, that's it, and it's a free thing, and they talk about the environment and stuff like that, recycling for these schools, and it's, it's free, there's no charge to it, and it's close.
Wick was there today.
No, it was Ramel.
Was it Ramel today? I thought it was Wick.
Ramel was there.
That's great.
They said Roma's Elementary, because my, my supervisor came up to me, and then the person that does community relations came up to me and told me about the students from Roma's Elementary, how their, their questions, they were very impressed with some of the questions they had at the elementary level with the students, usually they get, "How do you get the grass to grow on the hill?" But these students came up with stuff that actually, they, they kind of caught them off guard coming from an elementary level, so I'd like to give them kudos there, they did really good, and well-mannered, they said.
All right, um, I just had a, a couple of things, um, again, the, the Romulus High School Bambooster's is having a scholarship spaghetti dinner on, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, uh, the cost is seven dollars per ticket, um, children two and under get in free, and that money is used to, um, contribute to, uh, the scholarship, uh, campaign that they have for the band students, so they award, I want to say it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, um, scholarship, two, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar scholarships to, um, our music students, um, for them going on to, um, their post-secondary choices, so, um, if you would like some additional information or to purchase tickets, um, you can talk to, uh, Ms. Patrice, she is over, she's our music teacher over at the high school, um, I know that she would have tickets, or, uh, Tammy Garrison, who is, uh, the Bambooster President. The next item I have is the Awards Night banquet for the class of two thousand and twelve, um, I just wanted to put a general reminder, um, it, it's, it's a little far out, it's on May seventeenth, but I just wanted to kind of start getting some opportunities to, um, talk about it. Actually, this is also, um, a really nice event, because our culinary, um, students get an opportunity to show their skills, um, that they've attained over the year, they put out a magnificent spread, the food is absolutely delicious, um, and this particular program, our, our high school seniors, um, they come up and they're awarded by their teachers for, um, different, um, accommodations for, um, their classrooms, um, sc- and scholarships, so we get an opportunity to hear what our scholarship, um, recipients, how much they've actually brought in, and here go, and I, I probably should have written it down, Mr. Hurt usually has a goal, and I want to say this year is the three million dollars is the goal, um, for our high school, um, seniors to achieve, I think last year was like, close to like two-
Two and three quarters.
Two-point-three, somewhere around there, and so their goal this year was to bring in three million dollars, um, in, uh, scholarships, so, um, I'm hoping that they've exceeded that goal, and, um, that will happen on, uh, Thursday, May seventeenth, and it will be at six PM in the, uh, high school cafeteria. I wanted to throw out real quick, and I don't have a date, but the Urban Conference, um, I know we had gotten an email, um, and it's, uh, we, it, is it May?
It was the same day you had the, uh, awards, wasn't it?
Again, I think it is, it's May, May third, um, I just know it's on a Thursday, um, uh, and it's in Pontiac, and so they have, um, Romulus qualifies for a buy-one-get-one, if, um, I don't know if anyone planned on participating in that, um, but if you do, you could probably kind of coordinate amongst yourselves if you planned on going. Ms. Buckley and Mrs. Beard already mentioned the National Honor Society, um, Thursday at seven PM at the high school auditorium, and then also, too, they're going to have, um, the middle school eighth graders as well, um, participate in that ceremony for, um, academic excellence, and so, um, they will also be honored at that time, and that's at seven PM on Thursday. And that concludes, um, mine, oh, um, real quick, don't forget, if you wanted to get a book, I do have a couple of extras, um, for the book from, uh, Dr. Kung Jufu, who is going to be presenting this Saturday, um, it's going to be over at the middle school, and I want to say that the, the workshop is from nine to twelve.
Nine to one.
Nine to one, okay, and so if you'd like to, um, participate, it is, um, opened up, they do have a capacity, as Mr. Sutny said, of like a hundred people, so, um, but if you were interested, I would, um, call the middle school and, and let them know, and that concludes my, um, tidbits. All right, moved by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Mr. Kudrick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh, you all drive home safely.